I got it. All right, I got six o'clock, so welcome. Six o'clock, call this meeting Saginaw City Council order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose decree it is just sworn. Honor the Texas flag, the presidency, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Item two is the invocation. For that, our friend Rabbi Mordecai Griffin. Welcome Rabbi.
Thank you very much. Adonai, we thank you, Hashem, for this opportunity to come together, to have this meeting, to invoke your wisdom and your understanding. I pray, Adonai, in the merit of Messiah, Yeshua, that you would give each and every council member and the mayor that wisdom that comes only from you, the understanding that comes only from you, and that wisdom and understanding that brings prosperity and peace, good decisions, Adonai, and things that bring your name glory ultimately. Bless every member of this city, every citizen, the fire department, the police department, all the administrators, and may your hand of grace and mercy be upon us all, in the merit of Messiah, Yeshua. Amen.
Thank you Rabbi. Item number three is audience participation. That's covered on the screen. If you want to speak on an item, please contact the city secretary. Also, if you're watching this, I hope you're watching online. Hello? Hope you can see and hear as well. Give us some feedback on how the audio and visuals are online, as well if you have any questions after the fact. Always contact the city staff or the city manager, and they can answer all your questions about what transpired here. Moving forward, consent agenda. Action regarding minutes of June 16th. Action regarding approval of agreement for furnishing, installing, and maintenance of traffic signal preemption equipment. C is action regarding amendment to funding interlocal agreement for Bailey-Boswell overpass. D is action regarding agreement with CMJ Engineering, Inc. for geotechnical engineering services. E, action regarding appraisal service from Tom with Tom Kaiser, real estate appraiser. F, action regarding proposed 16-inch water pipeline crossing agreement with Union Pacific. T is action regarding individual project order with Kimley-Horn and Associates for sidewalk construction. H is action regarding capital improvement advisory committee recommendation regarding land use assumption and impact fees. I've had a request by council member Copeland to remove, to pull item C. You still like to do that? Pull item C? We'll pull item C?
And item G also.
G as well?
Thank you.
G as in girl? Okay. So we will pull item C and G. C and G. I will entertain a motion for the remaining.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items A, B, D, E, F, and H as presented.
Ballot is second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Those opposed? Let the record reflect the due of accord. We have a full house tonight. Moving to item C. Got it pulled up here? Or C? Had it pulled up. C is considering his action regarding amendment to funding interlocal agreement for Bailey-Boswell overpass. For that, Rick Trias, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is hopefully the last amendment to this interlocal agreement. We've had several that's come before the council before. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council member has regarding the agreement.
May? Go ahead.
Okay. I sound really loud. My goal for taking this out of the consent agenda is to make sure that Saginaw does receive the entire $6 million, $6.5 million dollars from the county. But I did see several different places in the agreement itself that were, that could make it possible for us not to receive that entire amount. And I will just go through the areas that I found. Looking at the agreement itself, it says that we, that the desire to amend the interlocal agreement is to provide initial, additional financial support of up to $1 million. Just keep that in mind. And then, a little farther down in section three, it says the ILA will expire on September 30th, 2022, or upon completion of the project as determined by the county, whichever occurs sooner. I would be extremely surprised if this project is completed by September 30th, 2022. And if by September 30th, 2022, the city has only spent, let's say, $3 million, due to delays that will no doubt happen, then the county would only be liable to reimburse us that amount, whatever that amount might be. It could be $1 million, it could be $4 million, it could be $6 million. But once September 30th, 2022 happens, that's the end of their obligation. And they, of course, only pay out in the form of reimbursement. So if we have not actually spent $6.5 million by June 30, 2022, they would not be liable to, to pay us $6.5 million. So I think we should either not have an end date, or we should have a statement in here saying that the city has the authority to extend that date at any time, the city on its own. I'm not an attorney. I'm sure Bren would have better ideas of how to ensure this. Let's see. Just the reason why I think it would be impossible for this to be completed by September 30th, 2022, is we're dealing with two railroads, TechDOT, the contractor, subcontractors, weather, and the, and a pandemic. So there are certainly many opportunities for delays. The other thing I have an objection to is, in the wording, it says that, says the date or upon completion, but it says that the county is the entity that is allowed to say when something is complete. Only the county, in capital letters, not the city. So let's say we have some inspections pending that cost money. Let's say we have just loose ends that have to be done, but in the county's opinion, the project is complete. And we, the city, might not agree that the project is complete, and we may have other Also, the chart, I think the chart is meaningless, and it should just be deleted because it is just based on guesses. And I understand it says it's subject to change, but by whom? And, you know, who gets to change it? Do we both have to agree? Under what circumstances can it be changed, et cetera? So I'd prefer that the, just wording, very specific wording be used in the agreement rather than the chart. I, like I said, I want to make sure that we have no loopholes in here that would allow the county to, to not pay us the entire $6.5 million.
Bren, would you like to get on a couple of those items and sort of clarify what the wording means? Specifically, dates, section three, the dates, and other, other couple of questions that
Well, I haven't, I haven't been involved in negotiating this contract, but obviously the stated purpose of the agreement is to supplement the amount that's been proposed to be provided by the county to add an additional $1 million. The requested revisions that Councilmember Copeland has requested can certainly be sought through further communication with the county, but I don't know what their position would be at this point.
What does, what does the wording mean where it says specifically, you know, September 30th, or upon completion of the project, whichever occurs sooner? What does that tie us to legally?
Well, that, that essentially provides that the, the agreement, the interlocal agreement itself as amended, will expire irrespective of anything else, by no later than September 30th of 2022. So if the agreement is expired, then all funding obligations under it would cease as well.
And so what happens if we get to September 30th, 2022, and we have spent, I don't know, not quite all the money? My assumption is we'd go back to the county and get another agreement. Is that the typical steps?
The, the agreement does complicate, contemplate further amendments if necessary. Obviously, that's up to the agreement of both parties, but yes, that would be the only recourse.
And also specifically, it says, sorry, I'm scrolling. You know, it says subject to change a couple of places, and Mary's question was how and by who? What's the, the standard mechanism for that? Specifically, in the, the very end of that chart, it says subject to change.
I apologize, I'm trying to find, you're talking about the attachment?
Page three, the very end.
The table.
The very end table. The last page.
So even if, even though it indicates subject to change, that, this is the, the payment that's proposed, and in order to amend the agreement, it requires the consent of both parties. I don't know how, so there are occasions where information is included in there just to put the reader on notice that there may be issues associated with the very specific timing set forth in the agreement. With that said, anything, if anything were to change with respect to something that is a component of an agreement, it requires the consent of both parties. So the, the way I would read that is, that's illustrative language to suggest that there may be timing changes associated with the project. It doesn't necessarily mean that either party can unilaterally revise the agreement simply because that wording was included.
Okay.
And I might add, if I could, just based on my discussions with Tarrant County staff and with the commissioner, I mean, Tarrant County, I mean, it doesn't cover us legally perhaps, but Tarrant County is committed to participate in this project to the tune of $6.5 million. The history of these agreements says this is probably the fourth or fifth amendment that we've had because the timeline kept moving out.
Right.
And they have expressed to me, at least, that, you know, they are flexible, which is why it's subject to change. If, if we go beyond that date, we'll simply come back and amend the agreement again. And that's my understanding that they're willing to do that. Of course, I don't speak for the Commissioners' Corps, but it's been their history that they've supported this project all along.
And typically, intergovernmental agreements are less than precise with respect to the obligations. They tend to be worded more in the, along the lines of memorandum of understanding, where the, the parties outline their general principles and goals. But you're right, there's, there's frequently a lack of precision that you'd see in interlocal agreements that, that you might otherwise see in private agreements, agreements with private parties.
I see. Okay, very good. No, and I agree with Rick. I have no, no doubt if there's an issue, we go back to the, the county, we'll be able to update this. It's just how will we do it and when to do it to make the best decision? So yeah. But thank you Bren. Council, other questions?
I have a couple of questions and a comment. The first comment is, not only is Rick accurate in what the county has, has expressed, but they've also demonstrated for the last six years that they're not only willing to meet their original commitment, but to also increase their commitment commensurate with our own hurt. I mean, we've, we've been hurt through this delay period. It's caused a lot of anxiety in the community, caused a lot, a lot of anxiety amongst, amongst us as council members. But I'll tell you that the county has continued to not only say that they will, they've continued to amend this agreement, and they've continued to express their, not only their interest, but a continued and increasing amount of money as we've come back to them. So that's a comment. It seems to me, though, that September the 30th is tied to their budget year. And it seems also that I don't think that they can commit funds into a third budget year. I think they're really tied to only being able to commit funds maybe one budget year out. It seems that that would be the case. Now, I don't know, I know that we don't get into the habit of budgeting things two years ahead of where we are. So it seems like they're really not wanting to put a backstop to this. They're just really wanting to set the horizon based upon their typical budget cycles. And it also seems like they have been increasing these amounts and setting out these payment schedules so they can absorb the cost in their budget cycles. It really would not be smart on the county's part to say, hey, we're going to just give you $4 million at the end of our budget year 2021 or 2022. And, and then they're really settling in on some big hit on their budget towards the end of the year. It looks like they're being pretty smart in spacing this out. So, so from the vantage point of, I don't, I don't get the sense, I personally do not get the sense that they're, they're stretching it out or wanting to create a backstop or, or create a gotcha. It, it looks to me like they're really wanting to pay attention to their fiscal years and how far out that they can forecast these costs, $6.5 million. That's the sense that I get.
Well, well, and I can tell you, we don't represent any county, so I, I'm afraid I'm, I can't tell you what the Constitution provides with respect to county's ability to appropriate funds beyond a certain time period, fiscal year. But the, the city is constitutionally prohibited from obligating, without establishing an interest and sinking fund, obligating funds beyond the current fiscal year. Now, that would, that would obviously just take us through September 30th of this year. The county is obviously committed to going further than that, but that, that certainly could be a, a relevant factor for that date and, and explaining why that date's not an arbitrary date, but it, it does run, in fact, with their fiscal year.
Yeah, just the September 30 date just struck me as, as appropriate for a fiscal year end.
Yes.
So, and to Mary's point, though, I think, I think it's a legitimate concern that the county could back off on those dollar amounts. I don't get the sense that they want to. I do get the sense that we don't know where we're going to land at the end of this pandemic. I think all of us are probably going to be scratching around for money at some point in time. We weren't hit as bad in our sales tax as we thought we would be. I don't know what property values are going to be doing here in the next two to three years, but there's a risk of that, and I see that being the principal motivating factor for the county to, to back off of any of their commitments, is that they really have to tighten their purse strings so tight that they can't afford what they had committed to previously. But I see by signing this, they are committed, at least until the end of the 2022 fiscal year, they're committed to the end of that fiscal year. I, I really don't see a reason not to extend this amendment or to agree to the amendment.
Dolph, do you have a point?
Just a couple of things to add, Mayor. This is the, at least the third one of these interlocal agreements we've done with the county for these street projects, and we've never had any issues with the past, in the past. I think the only way we don't receive the full 6.5 million is if we don't spend 6.5 million on our side. Well, our projected, now, our contract and our projected cost for the railroad are easily exceed that. So I don't, I really don't see this being an, an issue. These are bond funds that have been set aside specifically for each commissioner to use in, in their precincts. And so I know the money's there, I just, I don't see a problem with this at all. And it's never been a problem in the past with amending these agreements and extending, extending them if necessary. So just wanted y'all to be aware of that.
No, thank you. Thank you Dolph. Patrick, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that the county would up their ante another million if they weren't on board with this, and that's what they've done.
Yeah, one other thing I might add, Mayor, is that we will, as we begin spending funds on the project, we will send in a reimbursement request quarterly and be reimbursed based on 50% of what we spent that quarter until we reach that 6.5 million. And that's worked well in the past, and so we'll be receiving funds as we spend funds all throughout the project.
I might add one thing. I'm not an expert on county budgeting, but it does say that it's from bond funds, and they would have the same restrictions that we do, that they couldn't spend bond funds on operating expenditures, which is where you take most of your hit as far as the pandemic.
Good point. Trump, tell you anything else? Yeah, and when I saw this chart, my thought was, when do you get this project rolling? I, I mean, like today. I mean, like tomorrow, give me a shovel, let's go. So that, that was my emphasis. And Mary's right, I don't want it to drag out past September either, 2022. I saw that number, I sort of jumped. I'm, I'm hoping for a lot sooner than that. But, yeah, so I, I appreciate the county, and the county has been a big partner with us. It really is a partnership, and it's, it's done well. I appreciate them stepping up. I'm, I'm glad they did. It took a while for this to happen because of all the, everything going on in the world right now, but I'm glad it finally, finally is coming through. So, council, any other questions? Mary, yes ma'am?
Yes, I wanted to make it clear. I don't believe that Tarrant County has some evil intent and drew this up in such a way to get out of paying us $6.5 million. But I also think it's my responsibility to safeguard the city's funds and to make a legal document foolproof and loophole-proof, and we can't see into the future. And so if the intent is to actually pay the $6.5 million, which I don't dispute, I would not think that they would have a problem in wording it in such a way that makes it clear that this deadline will be extended, shall be extended, not may be extended, and in such a way that Saginaw can extend that simply because the project is not complete. And the reason they're spacing out their payments, they're reimbursing. So their payments depend on our payments. And that chart was just a complete guess, okay, by this quarter, Saginaw will have spent $1 million. Nobody knows that. So now, Tarrant County will give Saginaw $1 million, having received all the invoices, et cetera. So their, their reimbursement of the funds depends on when we spend them. So, you know, I have, I have basically two problems. I think we either need, don't need an end date, or make it very clear that, that that date can be, will be, not can be, will be changed one year more down the road if it's not complete. If it's not complete by 2022, change it to September 30th, 2023. If it's not complete by 2023, change it to September 30th, 2024. We've seen delays on this, just getting it up to us for a vote. So I see no reason to believe that this thing will be finished by September 30th, 2022. And even if it is, it's incumbent upon us to protect ourselves legally. When people make sure that they have foolproof contracts, they don't do so, they aren't saying, well, I don't trust you, and I don't think you're going to uphold your verbal commitment. People make contracts airtight so that these kinds of things can't happen. So I don't see any reason why Tarrant County would have a problem changing it to support those problems that are inherent in the agreement and saying that, oh, we've had to go back to them three or four times. Well, and if, if it takes longer for this to get built, that lets them hold on to their money longer. So they shouldn't have a problem with that. I don't understand why we're afraid to ask them to change this once again.
Council, any other questions?
I do want to address, I want to address the, the point of the quarterly reimbursement request. I, I don't think that there is a stipulation anywhere in the agreement that says Saginaw must spend all their funds first. I don't remember seeing that anywhere. Right? And this is a $13 million contract? And this also includes reimbursement for design fees? Just stick and brick?
Inspection.
Inspections and hard cost?
Before this agreement, it was all...
Just stick and brick. No inspection fees. So we have $750,000 in inspection fees that we know of, right? So, so the, the point here is, is that this doesn't obligate the county to pay only upon completion. That just sets the time horizon for which we can ask for money. And I will guarantee you that the project may not finish, if the project doesn't finish by 2022, we will have already spent $6.5 million towards that project well in advance of that date. There's no, we've probably already committed in early contract purchases, I think there probably a lot of precast work on the project. You're going to commit $3.5 million before you see the first piece of yellow iron show up out there.
I think you're right on the number. Materials on hand, ready, ready for maintenance.
So before any dirt starts moving out there, we would probably be in a position to submit at least a $3 million reimbursement request to the county. That could be within the next six months. So, I mean, I think what I'm, what I'm getting at is that the county is being prudent in setting a time horizon. And if, as long as there's not a stipulation in the agreement, which I don't recall, am I, am I recalling that right? We don't have a requirement to spend our money first. Is that right?
It's a, it's a agreement.
We're going to have to basically front three months at a time and then get reimbursed for 50% of wherever we spend.
So I'm using a bad, bad choice of words here. We don't have to spend all the way up to within $6.5 million of the full contract price and then start asking for reimbursement. We can start asking for reimbursement immediately.
Next quarter.
Yeah. So we will spend the county's money long before we finish the project. And if they do decide to cancel the ILA in 2022, and we already have the money, let it die. And I mean, that's, that's what I'm getting at. It's, it's really, wasn't a sinister thing, it's just they're being prudent in setting their own time horizon.
Yes, and my, my response to that would be, since we can't see into the future, we are going to be paying out as we incur costs. And if there are substantial delays, we will not have spent, it is possible that we will not have spent the $6.5 million by June 30th, 2022, if there are substantial delays. That is the unknown. That's what I'm trying to protect our, my, ourselves from.
Yeah. I understand that.
And so I'm pretty stubborn, as you all know. So I, I will stick to my opinion because we cannot see into the future. And I think there is no harm in legally protecting the city's funds by making this more ironclad.
Council, any other questions? Staff, any other questions? Any comments? I'll entertain a motion then.
May I make a motion that we accept?
Are you on?
I make a motion that we accept the action regarding the amendment to funding interlocal agreement with Tarrant County, or with Bailey-Boswell Road Overpass with Tarrant County.
Okay. Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Most have passed. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, so we're on G now, right? And G is, hold on, pull it up. G, Consideration Action Regarding Individual Project Order with Kimley-Horn Associates for New Sidewalk Construction, 215 to 500 Block of Bluebonnet Street. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Yes, Mayor, Counsel. This is a CDB project. We applied for the spray and were successful in getting the project. And so this is the county that actually manages that contract. They have selected up the Kimley-Horn, we did our application. So this will be our participation in that CDB project.
I may not be remembering correctly, but I thought we had also talked about Green Street that runs behind Saginaw Elementary School.
There is an exhibit attached to the memo, Council memo, that shows the limits of the project.
Right, and I saw it on Bluebonnet.
Right, so Green was never part of that, other than the intersection of Bluebonnet.
I thought we had talked about doing that, because kids walking on Green and Opal, and Bluebonnet as well. I've had a lot of neighbors complain about, you know, kids riding bicycles down the middle of the streets on all three of those streets, and I thought we had talked about trying to get Green and Opal, the sidewalks around the school set up.
Well, I think, again, if you look, if you look at the, if you look at the exhibit, some of those areas do have existing sidewalk. And so the long term is to continue to apply for these CDB grants on a two-year basis to complete that loop all the way around the elementary school. But Green Street, at least it appears on the north side, does have sidewalk today. So, but if it doesn't, again, the plan was just to loop that whole neighborhood with, you know, going down Opel, Southern, and Bluebonnet.
Yeah.
And that was, that was the, that was in the application that was submitted to the county.
Okay, because Green and Opel don't have sidewalks for the kids.
Well, it would have to be programmed in the future sidewalk program.
Well, remember, Cindy, we may be thinking of two different things. This is the CB, CBDG, I can't ever say that right, Community Development Block Grant Fund, which only covers a certain area. We're also doing a separate sidewalk project with the other money.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's covered under that. Would have to ask to make sure, but it's two different things, because there's only so many areas we can do to see community block grants on. It's very, very limited.
Okay.
So I think that's maybe what you're coming from?
Probably.
I don't have in front of me all the sidewalks we're looking at on that other big project with the bond, the CO money, but we can find that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, we, right, we did look at elementary schools throughout the city as part of that bond program.
Right.
Really, this area is really the only area in Saginaw that's sorely lacking in sidewalks, particularly around elementary and middle schools, so. So, right, there's an opportunity there in the future to provide sidewalks in that neighborhood.
I think we had budgeted about a million dollars for the sidewalk work we had talked about earlier this year, separately from this, so. Let's make sure that Green is on there, but I think it is. Let's ask, but we, that's a separate deal that we've got a million dollars that we're gonna look at, so.
Excellent. Yeah, I just, I know it's not an issue right now, but.
It will be.
It will be.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions on 4G? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 4G as presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item number five, Consideration Action Regarding Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed for Parkland, Parkland and Basswood Crossing. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Yes, Mayor, Counsel. We have received word from the Bureau of Work and the Tarrant Plaza District doesn't recognize park dedication unless it's done by the warranty deed. I know it's strange to me, too, but these were previously dedicated parks by plats in all of those spaces. This warranty deed is just to make that eligible for tax purposes.
And the city manager keeps telling me to turn my mic on. Sorry.
So we're charging us $10, bottom line.
It's already ours, by plats.
You gotta pay him $10, sure, okay. Weird, but yeah. Oh, counsel questions? If no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve that staff be able to execute the warranty deed. Is this a staff-level execution, I would assume, or is this the mayor?
We will just, well, the mayor will have to sign. We'll file for record, right? The staff will take care of the filing.
Yeah, a couple of signatures on the.
Then I recommend that we allow the mayor to execute the warranty deed as needed.
My second.
Your second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item number six, Discussion of Tarrant County Face-Mask Order. Hey, it's the Bren Meredith Show. Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know how much everyone wants to know about this issue, but when the agenda item was originally scripted, the governor had not, on the eve of the Fourth of July, issued two new orders and completely changed all the rules. So the discussion about the actual topic on the agenda is moot now. Face masks have been required, although the clarification of GA 28, which is the Public Gatherings Order, and GA 29, which is the new mask order, they both contain a lot of ambiguity, as have all the prior orders. So I'm happy to discuss any of the specifics with anyone that may have questions. Otherwise, I can tell you, we've spent a lot of time on the mask rule, the way that the first introductory phrase is written, where it requires a mask, except for, you know, indoors or outdoors, except for certain circumstances. It does end with a comma, where not feasible to maintain six feet of social distance. That essentially is an exception that swallows the rule in most cases. Because what the mask order provides is, if it's objectively feasible to maintain six feet of separation, you're never required to wear a mask, ever. So with that said, I think the spirit of it is to look for voluntary compliance. The governor also reduced the ability to issue a criminal penalty from $1,000 to $250 per violation, and it requires a warning first. But the governor said this is to elicit compliance. I know he's also accepted a couple of circumstances, including voting, religious ceremonies, et cetera. Happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any, about those. And then the GA 28 clarification that reduced gathering, outdoor gatherings requiring permission from 100 persons to 10 persons. Right now, there's quite a bit of dialogue between cities and the Attorney General's Office about what, in fact, constitutes an outdoor gathering, because there are a number of exceptions. The Attorney General's Office has anecdotally provided guidance to one of our other client cities that what the governor actually meant by outdoor gatherings was any outdoor gathering that was not associated with a business activity. We were told by the Attorney General's Office, for instance, that flea markets are outdoor malls and that therefore, they're not subject to the consent requirement that the mayor agreed to allow them to take place if 10 or more people are gathered, but that instead, they're subject to the Phase II 50% occupancy levels in the same way that a mall would be. And with that said, of course, they provide no guidance on how you calculate the occupancy level of a flea market, for instance. But I know we had a outdoor gathering for the fourth here, the farmer's market. Out of an abundance of caution, I suggested, if we wanted to consent to it, that the mayor provide some consent. That way, it's, you know, ultimately clear. I did have a conversation with another client today that the city was concerned about whether or not it wanted to put its stamp of approval on a private farmer's market. And we essentially took the position that one of the exceptions to the gathering, outdoor gathering rule, was any activity that's contemplated in the federal SISA guidelines. And obviously, farmer's market provides food, groceries, et cetera. And so that's one way to look at that. But as I said, the Attorney General's Office feedback seems to be that, even though it doesn't say so in the order, what was contemplated with the outdoor gatherings, which do not apply to indoor gatherings, which is another question, why would outdoor gatherings be limited, but not indoor gatherings? Was that the primary purpose was to address Fourth of July celebrations, if a local community wanted to. So those are the conversations that we continue to have, and when we figure it all out, the governor will change the rules, and then we'll start all over again. But those are the rules that we're working with presently.
Counsel, questions? Mary, yes?
It's not a question, but just another comment to show how we're learning new information on a daily basis sometimes, but that in the last day or two, some scientists have begun to question whether six feet is even enough, and they're saying possibly 30 feet even. So just to add to the confusion and let us understand that this is an ever-changing situation.
Yes.
Bren, I have a question. So the governor issues an order, then he goes on the news or whatever and says something that maybe contradicts the order.
Right.
I'm assuming the written order still has precedent? How does that work?
If it were to be litigated, that's correct. It's the written text that governs how things work. But as you've seen, there have been clarifications issued from the governor's chief of staff's office, the one that we had that said, you know, while there are occupancy limits for restaurants, implicitly, you never count the employees in calculating what the occupancy level might be. And that was a two-sentence letter sent on the letterhead of the office of the chief of staff for the governor. And that's, you know, do we rely on that guidance? That has no legal merit whatsoever. But when we're trying to, attempting to understand what are clearly ambiguously worded orders, it's at least something to point to, to elicit compliance from folks.
Okay. Counsel, other questions for Bren?
Well, I just have a comment. I want to make sure that everybody in the community understands that we have been kind of in a perpetual declaration mode since the county declared, probably in March, I think it was maybe March 18th, somewhere in that timeframe. And we've been operating, not necessarily as a seven-member unit, but there's been a lot of pressure on Todd because we're operating in a emergency declaration. And I just want to, I want the community to know that Todd has been making some very difficult decisions. He's not been doing it alone. He's been seeking the advice of staff. He's been urging that the staff communicate with council members, get the feedback from council members, so that Todd is not out there on his own. But he's been under a lot of pressure, and I just want to tell you, thank you very much. I thank you for your leadership. I want to thank you and Jennifer for advocating for masks and demonstrating that not only is it not that hard, but it's not gonna kill you to wear a mask. But I just wanted, I wanted the community to know that and that we need to support Todd as a seven, the six of us need to support him every way that we can when we're, while we're under this emergency declaration.
That's exactly right, and there have been a lot of questions about the masks. One of the questions we received recently was, you know, one of the exceptions to wearing a mask is if you have a physical handicap or other disability. And there's been a lot of misinformation, so much so regarding HIPAA and the Americans with Disabilities Act, that the Department of Justice issued a federal news release indicating that there is no Americans with Disabilities Act exception to a requirement that you wear a mask. But you're absolutely right. It takes wading through all of these issues on a daily basis.
Thank you, Patrick. I appreciate that. Other comments or questions, counsel? Any other questions for? This is your Ask Attorney time.
Bren, thank you for the information.
Thanks for helping us stay on top of this, too. It's been, as you said, a very fluid situation. All right, moving forward, so at item number seven, so at 6:45, we're in Budget Workshop. This is Ms. Ken Quinn, Budget Director, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Up until this point, the last few months, we've talked about kind of general budget issues, debt, tax rate, and contemplating debt. Now, we're gonna get into actual, some of the funds. So let me start, we're gonna start with CCPD, Crime Control and Prevention District Fund. But before I specifically talk about that, let me explain the columns to you in case some of you aren't as familiar with the layout. That first column that says fiscal year 1920 adopted is the budget that was adopted last September for this current fiscal year. The next column is the revised budget, so that is any changes that you approved mid-year. So in March, you took action to modify the budget, and those modifications are reflected in that column. That's marked as revised. The next column is the year-to-date. That is year-to-date through May. I do have June year-to-date numbers, but at the point that I put this together for the packet, we had May. So those are year-to-date through May, and then the percentage is just simply the year-to-date as a percentage of the revised budget. The next column is fiscal year 1920 estimate, so that is where we estimate that we will end the year up. And then the next, the next column, the last column, is the planning for next fiscal year, the estimate for fiscal year 2021. So all of the funds that we'll discuss are following this same format. The Crime Control and Prevention District Fund has its main revenue source for sales tax. And again, I'll remind you all about the sales tax. The city is eligible to collect up to two cents in sales tax revenue, and the city of Saginaw does collect the full two cents. One cent of that goes to the general fund. The other half cent, I think it was in the mid-'90s, the city of Saginaw passed the additional half-cent sales tax to reduce property tax. So the total of one and a half cents goes to the general fund. The other half cent is divided between the CCPD Fund and the Street Maintenance Fund. So of that half cent that you have left, three-eighths of that goes into the Crime Control and Prevention District Fund, and the other one-eighth of the cent goes to the Street Maintenance Fund. So that's just a little history about the sales, about the sales tax. The Crime Control and Prevention District Fund is mainly funded with that three-eighth cent of sales tax. We also have some grant money in there for bullet-resistant vests that they're proposing for this coming year. The largest expenditures, or the majority of the expenses, are operating expenses, which are ongoing, where we reimburse the general fund for the expense of 10 patrol officers, one jailer, a dispatcher, and half of a school resource officer. So that is the bulk of the expenditures here. We also fund software costs that the police department uses for their different systems out of this sales tax money in the CCPD Fund. The police department is on a schedule to where they replace three, two, three, or four patrol vehicles each year. And so we are continuing to do that in the coming year, to replace three patrol vehicles. There are, there is money in there to replace nine bullet-resistant vests and to purchase up to four additional vests for additional police officers. And part of that will be funded through a grant administered through the state. We also replaced four ticket riders. Again, we are on a replacement schedule. They have a three-year warranty, and after that, we replace it. So it comes out to be about four ticket riders a year. And then the other item that's proposed out to be about four ticket riders a year. And then the other item that's proposed in the CCPD fund is a utility vehicle. As we have added more special events and gatherings, the police department has requested to you to purchase a vehicle to help patrol those gatherings of people. Are there any questions about CCPD before I move on to street maintenance?
Mayor?
I just wanted to understand the FY 2021 planning, and that figure is, is lower because we aren't spending as much as we did last year, or, or we don't think we'll have as much money, or why is that lower than what happened last year?
On the, are you talking the?
443-902.
Right. So the, the very first column there, beginning fund balance, that's the, that's the amount of money that we have to start off in that fund. We add to that revenues and subtract expenditures to come up with an ending fund balance. And then that very last row is showing you, are we increasing the fund balance, or are we decreasing the fund balance? So yes, we are, we are decreasing the fund balance if, if those estimates come to pass for 2021 by $46,180. We feel comfortable in doing that because we are spending more than $46,000 in one-time expenditures. We wouldn't want to do that to pay for the ongoing costs. So we wouldn't want to draw down fund balance for the police officer salaries or the things that it takes to do ongoing operations. But we can do that for one-time expenditures.
Okay. Thank you.
I should have mentioned the assumptions that we're making for sales tax. As you all know, we haven't been hit as hard as we could have been. So what I have done is year-to-date overall in all of our sales tax collections, so general fund, CCPD, and street maintenance, we're still about 9% over where we were last year. Before the pandemic, we were running at about 11%. So we had about 3.6% decrease, and then we had an increase last month. Tomorrow, we'll find out our numbers for July. So what I did was I used year-to-date and then estimate that we will collect the same amount as we collected for the same months last year. So it is conservative, but without the, you know, there's so much unknown. We don't know next year, are we going to have this happen again or, or not? So that is the assumption that's being used when estimating sales tax. Any more before we move on to street maintenance?
Ma'am, thank you for clarifying the, the sales tax forecast.
Sure. So this is the one-eighth cent that we collect for street maintenance. It's, and, and just like the CCPD fund, these funds that we collect are specifically for these functions, and that's why it's in its own separate fund. So the eight cent must be spent for maintaining streets, street maintenance or sidewalks. And so that's why this is in the separate fund. We've, we've used the same assumptions that I just explained in estimating revenues. On the expense, and one thing I did want to mention to you, there was a, quite a big change between the current year budget and what's estimated. And that is for the, as you all have approved, the East McIlroy curb and gutter and asphalt paving. So we're estimating that that will be completed in this year, and that's what the, that big number is there, the 946,000. That's the biggest project that makes that number up. For next year-
That will be completed in the 1920 budget, right?
That's what the estimate is.
Before October, yeah.
The big, the big project in fiscal year 2021 is the Burlington Road reconstruction. That's been delayed a few years just due to the construction in the area. It didn't make sense to rehabilitate a street just to have it torn up again. So that's being moved now to fiscal year 2021. The main areas of, of reconstruction are listed there, concrete spot repairs on industrial between Blue Mound and Watson Boulevard, and reconstruct Opal Street from McIlroy to Route, Route, I can never say it.
We do so.
Yeah. And White Rock Drive from Longhorn to West Cliff. Those are the big projects. There's also money in there for crack sealing sidewalks and, and materials. Are there any questions regarding street maintenance?
Counsel, any questions? All right, let's move on. Thank you, Kim.
Sure. The next fund that we're going to discuss is the donations fund. The majority of the revenue and expenditures in this fund are the donations that we collect through the monthly utility bill. There's a dollar that, it's about 75%. So it's a pretty high percentage of people that participate in that voluntary donation, a dollar for beautification, parks, and library. So people are, can donate up to $3 a month. And if they wanted to, they could donate more than that, but the standard is, is $3 a month. We also have other miscellaneous donations. People donate to the animal shelter. We are collecting donations for Train and Grain Festival, and the fire department is very good at collecting donations for their events that they hold. But the majority is the, up to $3 for the beautification parks and libraries. So that is, that is the revenue in this fund. The expenditures that are proposed in 2021 are ongoing expenses that we have in animal services. That is for the vaccination program and primarily medical care for animals. In the library, they, we, they fund with their donations summer interns, so two summer interns for 13 weeks during the very busy times of the summer. It also, they also use library donations to pay for some of their licensing fees and for all of the summer programs that they provide. On the beautification donations, the mowing along the Boulevard and Blue Mound Road is paid for here, as well as seasonal landscaping and holiday decorations. Last year was the first, or I guess it's the current year was the first year that there was a $25,000 set aside for public art, and that is proposed in fiscal year 2021 as well. In the parks donations, there-
Valerie, you want to tell, you want to tell everybody what you told me about the art, what you, the feedback you got on the?
Oh, yeah, on the green mural, mural on the end of JR's. I've had so many people tell me how good it was, and so they want to do something bigger, green elevators.
What did you say? That was the, the best thing we've ever done, is what somebody said?
Several of us said that was the best thing Saginaw did. So, yeah, Ma and Paul Green look really good right there.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
It's, it's really amazing.
It's freehand. I can't even believe it.
It looks like they're just standing there.
It sure does.
Yeah. Yeah, but it looks nice.
Can I bring up an unpopular opinion? We've got 20,000, 25,000 for Train and Grain. What's the chance Train and Grain is going to happen? I'm a little pessimistic at this point. What do you think, Janice?
We heard, as probably all of you did today, that the state fair has been canceled.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm not thinking very favorable about it. We, we do have people that have jumped on board and have already given, as far as sponsors. We've even had people sign up for booths and that sort of thing. My concern is, though, we're about to the point where we're going to have to start ordering things, signs, T-shirts, spending some money. And I don't want to do that and then get into September, and then this thing spike again, and then the county or governor, whoever, say, we can't have it, or, or we decide that it's not in the best interest for our residents. So I just, I'm open to some guidance from y'all, but right now, I've spoke with some of my committee members, not as a group, but a few of them today, and they're kind of thinking that it might be in our best interest to cancel as well.
I don't want to get into big discussion about that, but if, if you have any thoughts on this, counsel, email me and Janice, if you would. I've got my own thoughts, but we can discuss that offline. Let's just, I think you're right, Janice. We need to make some hard decisions pretty soon. So let's, so if you've got some thoughts, call me, email me, and copy Janice, and let's just get some of this going, so.
The other thing to consider is the timing of this, right? So we have the same amount budgeted in the current year because even though the festival is in October, a lot of the expenses will be spent before October 1st. So the same would be true possibly for next year. Say we're going to have another one in October of '21, you may still want to keep funding in here for future.
Good point, yeah. Very good point. Okay.
Let's see. We have in, in, in parks donations, there is the fireworks scheduled for 2021. If you recall, we budgeted, and we've actually paid a deposit of $6,000 in the current year, but we couldn't get a, a date. So that is for July 4th of 2021. That's the, that's what that budget is. We just talked-
After this year, we need something.
We just talked about Train and Grain. I do want to mention the Train and Grain is funded in several different areas. This is the donations fund where a lot of the supplies are funded. But we also will talk here in a minute about the escrow fund. We use hotel motel tax for advertising and for entertainment. And then the general fund picked up about $40,000 in costs for overtime. And, well, the full amount wasn't for overtime, but $40,000 in total liability. So it would be overtime expense as well as comp, comp time liability. And the majority of that was in general fund. There was some split into enterprise fund as well. There's a small amount for senior supplies. I, I forgot to mention the senior center receives donations as well, and so they spend that for supplies for their different programs. And then the budget there in the, from the fire donations is primarily for their summer camp, and then the Easter egg hunt is a big one, too.
Are they going to be able to do, there's, it's been canceled, hasn't it, the summer camp for the fire department?
We ended up, well, it was up to the, the donors. Some of the donors for the Easter egg hunt were reimbursed, and then some, it's just staying here for, for the next year. Are there any questions regarding the donations fund? Okay. We'll move on to the general escrow fund. The general escrow fund is kind of a hodgepodge. It's special revenues that are either infrequent or of a small amount that don't warrant a whole fund, all of it, all of its own. So those various revenue streams that we need to keep track of separately to make sure the money we collect is spent on specific things are in this general escrow fund. The types of things that we collect in this fund are hotel motel tax, court technology, court security. So for every citation that's issued, $4 of that is collected and should be spent on court technology. $3 is collected for court security. And then there are other miscellaneous revenue sources that we collect and keep track of in this fund. The, the expenditures proposed in 2021 are the last payment for the agreement that we have with Community Link for the farmer's market. The Train and Grain, as I mentioned before, we have 10,000 in hotel motel fund for advertising and 10,000 for entertainment expense. We pay for the bailiffs overtime out of court security fees that we collect. So that's budgeted in there. And then we have insurance deductibles. We start out with about an average of 40,000, but that can vary depending on our losses for, for in any given year. So that can, that can vary. Are there any questions regarding escrow fund?
Just, could you remind me where, I just saw the, the Basswood Crossing agreement, and I recall, we're spending all of that this year. We're not carrying into that over into next year. But I also recall the Boswell Development and the apartment complex up there to the north, they had to commit funds, as I recall, to the Old Decatur projects that we're doing up there. Can you remind me where we're holding that money?
We have that balance here in the general escrow fund. The Old Decatur Road improvements, we have about $680,000 in this fund.
So it's, it's in the, I guess, the beginning balance dollars?
It is.
Okay. It's just not, you haven't stipulated it out here. It's just in the ball of money.
The timing of that expense.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions, counsel? Anything else, Kim?
That's all I've got. We'll do some more funds in the next meeting.
Okay. Since we're, since we're in an item on Budget Workshop, I do have a question. Our city manager is watching. He's been texting me. Hello, Gabe. His question was, do we want to continue, do we want to have a extra Saturday work, Budget Workshop, or just do it all at council like we've been doing? We could continue as we are and then have a half-day Saturday Budget Workshop if we want to, or we just do everything at council? What's the, the council's preference? Mayor, go ahead.
I like the, doing it during the meetings. But then we could, you know, if, if we found ourselves needing more time, we could always do the Saturday. But hopefully, we could get it all done during the meetings, regular meetings.
I like doing this during the meeting, but I also like to do the Saturday thing, revisit. The first time I did this, it lasted quite a while, a whole day. The last time we did this, it was like three, three hours. I just like being able to go back and review everything.
Okay. Charlie?
I like the, the meeting by meeting as we're doing that, because you're, you're getting little snippets of it instead of all at once.
Valerie?
I like the meetings, but I also think Saturday, especially when we have a new member on council, only so he can understand more. I think that it gets explained better on a Saturday. I don't know why, but I feel like that. I know the first year I was here, I was like total confused. And I own my own business, but it wasn't nothing like city business, so.
Patrick?
I think the combination of both is very effective. I think having the combination allows us to take in what staff is thinking about in terms of each fund. And then as we are collecting that information, we're able to summarize that on the Saturday and say, okay, the budget as a whole, this is where the budget as a whole is moving, instead of taking into those bite-sized chunks. Because when I leave here today, I'm going to generate some additional questions and thoughts in my mind about some things, simply because this is the first opportunity we've had to discuss it as a group with all of us sitting here. And, and not everybody is, is going to be prepared to ask questions as the material is being presented. I, I know that I'm usually not. It takes me a little bit of time to chew on it and think through it. So I think a combination of both, it will shorten and certainly make more effective the Saturday meeting, rather than getting the fire hose of information, just pull the full throttle and blast onto all of us at one time. So I think combination is what I, I would-
Charles Beasley?
Being the rookie, I, I like these little, the little bits we get during the meetings, but the Saturday, the Saturday one was really good for me, being the first time I had participated in one. So I like these little small chunks, but the Saturday one is a good one.
How about this? How about we continue doing the small chunks as, as necessary in council meetings, but then we plan like a half-day in August to wrap everything up? Is that reasonable?
And Mayor, we already have that on our budget calendar. So I think it's August 15th, if that's a Saturday off the top of my head, then, then that is the date that we set aside if you chose to do that. I also want to mention, as Mr. Farr said, that we are happy to meet with any one of you individually. you individually or answer questions as we go. Don't feel like you need to wait until a workshop or the Saturday meeting. We're happy to talk with you at any time.
And we'll get, as you mentioned earlier, we will get the final property tax from TAD on July 25th, right?
Correct. And since that is a Saturday, they're promising that we'll have it on the 24th, Friday, the 24th, this year.
So that's the reason, just for anybody out there, that's the reason our dates are as such. We can't finalize our budget until we have the final numbers from TAD, because that's our revenue, part of our revenue. So that happens the end of July, then we finalize at a meeting somewhat in August and then approve the budget in September, is sort of how it flows. So, great. And also, thank you, Kim. You do a great job. I really appreciate it. You spoil us, I really do, but I do appreciate it. Any other questions, council? If not, then at 7:10, we're back in regular session. Item eight, executive session is thankfully not required. Item nine, I'll ask you a move, most adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Right hand.
Propose at 7:11, we're out of here.